We call the need to order at seven oh three. We say the pledge of allegiance. I am by the allegiance to notify the United States of America. Institute Republic, of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we have Kate Bo Calant here. Megan Wicks is absent, Kathy Grant is absent. Erica Calwara is here, Valerie Muschiano is here, Sarah Thompson is here, and Christopher Wilson is here. We also have President Adam Burrows and Tom O'Connor.
Steve Guest. Director of Our Food Services. Thank you. We normally start with our. Missions. The Board of Education mission is to provide our students skills essential to reach their highest potential, safe environment for learning. If they aspire to be responsible, respectful, and civic-minded members of society. Commit to help educate, challenge, and inspire each child to excel as lifelong learners who adapt structurally and is for changing all the cultural, technological. Want to see any citizens present with any sense of comment sentiment?
No comments received.
I can turn it over to, I did just a brief update for our agenda. We're pretty. Pretty good tonight, completely from the long quickly and so. Thank you. So anyway, I think it looks like a lot of policy, but it's. My dad will turn it over to.
Do you hear what? Um, so sort of our summer recap. You have a clear as well as sort of projections to post again here. So. Uh, they came as this identity for more for the conservative accounts. You can see here over here. Both of this going back in us and point really is even twenty three, uh, three twenty four that. So, um, that now they can lose numbers in that game of. A much, right? So if you jump back down to follow the nineteen. Uh, certainly the nineteen trades from what older did, we're at twenty four thousand. Then you sort of see if you feel good. For more learning, the A P hybrid stuff. And that it's great. It's not about the surface. They started being the greatest ones. Back over to the bubble of voters, sort of that. All things. Uh, percent of the news. We had anticipated that. So, um, we did have three breakfasts this year. Of course, they didn't. Uh, it's a mistake. Uh, it is not gonna happen for a couple of school years. Um, they, uh, they did announce today that they are going to save. Family for the reason thirty cent off. It helps a little. It's sort of anything whatever it was, we're a little disappointed with something. Not only they continue to trend, but we've earned the great being sore, what everybody thinks. But since that's not happening, when it makes an adjustment to the third. Now, overall, it's been a great year. I didn't talk about something we have in there. Um, and. Proceeding and sharing awesome job, great job. Well, who will be sorted back with consistent level? Um, USDA sort of works a year in advance, but also coming off over this still clearly times. We feel like we'll set it back and even out the coast for now is is going back to. Really increasing the participation. Only have to chase that point. You know, a little bit of surplus money and did a new job of having a person body this up here. So. Optimistic to be continuing to maintain the program. Running it out. Certainly a lot of areas. That we can plan for, but sometimes it takes a lot of thought. Overall, you know.
Pictures clarify the prices. I'm not sure if I'm reading it correctly up top. So.
So the reduced, uh. B. So the two dollars and fifty cents is is per breakfast. And then thirty cents for the reduced breakfast. And then the full box of lunch, three seventy five a month, then it's forty cents. Three of the board that per month.
Right, okay.
So the state will pick up that thirty and forty.
You just didn't read correctly. So I was trying to figure out the numbers.
Yeah, that's like.
For the board information, we need to make a motion. Setting the lunch rate the same as last year, but. Three seventy five for the lunch, forty cents for the forty cents for breakfast. And if the board makes a motion, then. We will be able to put that in communications that we're writing now. So now is the time to make the decision.
Right, but for free and reduced lunch, there are not being. That's my hearing.
For more induced.
Okay.
So that's the. So the full pay kids would pay the three seventy five. The the reduced kids will would normally take a supporting. But the state will pick up there for it. So we're really looking at it. Could be less confusing. Free and reduce are all free.
Right, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But so when when they come out with the number for the reduced, we just, you know, publish that as well, right? They could, they could change that in a moment's notice.
They certainly could. We're, we're not.
So at least establish a baseline now, Val. And if we need to make an adjustment with what the state is offering for the free and reduced, we can come back to it.
What's our not cost?
We pay about thirty three cents.
Three seventy five, forty and forty.
Thirty five, fifty and two fifty. Right.
Yeah.
So the way we determine lunch and breakfast prices, breakfast prices are sort of subjective. Um, it's a multiple thing, but we do get a an incentive from the state off of the breakfast program. You get, I, I think you get twenty two hundred dollars a year just as an incentive off of the breakfast program. And then the chart practices is determined. Lunch is determined by paid lunch equity tool. So it's crazy how we are national school lunch and about such strict rules. One rule they allow you is to decide what you want to charge for lunch, right? But you gotta follow the rules of what it is. So using this paid lunch equity tool, if you follow it like a free kid. Is eligible for free and should that have been only free? Now, paid kids should not benefit. From a free kid. So in theory, when you put the money sources together, you really track them as. Full pay money, reduced money and free money. And in theory, no groups should subsidize the other, right? So you use this paid lunch equity tool, figuring out labor and all those things. So some years you might come here and you'll have a surplus in the bank and we may say, hey, we're raising prices. So. Just to give you an idea, it's a little bit complicated and isn't. It it isn't really as subjective and says we can save your prices. Because if you decide and the state says, if you can serve breakfast for under, I think the paid lunch pack would be using some. Inflationary indexes around three fifty one. If you can prove to the state painfully proved to them, how you can serve it under that. You can, but if you, if it, it doesn't work and you choose to do it, then. The board of that has to subsidize the difference, right? So we always sort of just stay above the curve and we try to keep it in round numbers of quarter. You know, not that people carry money as much anymore, but it's easier to calculate when you start to do the math and when you're setting your checks, you're not setting any. Weird implements of of calling it or even writing a check or a bit in points. So. Sort of how we determine it and. You know, working with Preston and Canterbury and Rizwell like I do Franklin. Universally, we stay the same and we kind of check with other districts to see, now the makeup of free reduce changes it a little bit for sure, but. Universally, not enough to to cha-change it much more or so. The prices that are recommended, we stay at all the districts around here and we'll continue to stay at those prices as well.
So we may run somewhat of a surplus because these reduced kids are now. Really free.
We won't though, because the number of reduced kids here. The window to qualify for reduce is such a small window. This should have been going along and go. It should just be free. Or full pay. So I would guess, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I would guess that our number of these kids that are eligible is under twenty in the district here. It's not. And if you figure if you get sixty percent participation in a day, you're talking maybe twelve kids. So if you're talking twelve forty cents is a three dollars a day, not a huge number really gonna really help us.
Do we? Do we miss out on funds being a small town? For instance, cities pass out lunches to kids throughout the summer. Are we missing during the school year funds that other schools are getting? They could help offset some of the costs for full pay kids.
I, I would say no. Um, so for instance, in Griswold, we run the camp. Uh, and and Griswold is considered severe need. So at that point. Because it's considered universally. Severe need, every kid who comes to Griswold can eat. Now, because violent power doesn't meet that severe number, uh. Thankfully, which is a good thing. Um, you would have to do, um, in tracking summer meals here by eligibility still, you would in theory have to do the application. So. These programs are available, right? They're community based or supported. Sometimes they're subsidized by other things. But whenever I look at a program, related line of programs, they have to self-sustain themselves financially. Cause then again, you go back to that whole thing. I don't want to run summer meals, staff that inventory food purchase upkeep. Get seven, eight people to come a day, lose your shirt. And then basically then you pulled away from that surplus of that money to add. So. Uh, to answer your question, no, I don't think being a small school, you're really losing out because we wouldn't have the ability to sustain any program. We took that out of my, my thinking.
And hoping those twenty kids, now that they have the free instead of just our reduced, that they'll kind of. All twenty will be able to utilize that every day or. Uh, maybe before off tonight at ten, I have that for some of those kids.
Yeah, the, the free piece really, you know, involved, no one really knew how it was gonna go, but. What we did see is a waste of food, to be honest with you. You had kids. That would pack a brown bag lunch and just want a slice of pizza, a pizza day. And they would take those other four components, throw them in the garbage and just eat the pizza and a bag, right? And then at breakfast too, it's free while I eat breakfast at home. So. You know, that's hard because, you know, I certainly I'm glad we offer those services to families, but. You as a parent may not want your kid to practice. Hey, like dude, whatever reason, eat some all and I'm good with that. But the option of free is is a tricky one, right? So, um. That opinion's changed over the years back. You know, as a parent, it's just probably may go on, whether it's. Eating disorders or just health patches, you know, some of the things that we offer serve me. Um, and if we want to get into the menu stuff a little bit, I can like explain to pay like or not like. So a lot of the things too is, is a lot of explaining is based on commodities that are available by the USDA. So we focus on that, getting those foods now pretty much free of charge. And a lot of those items, because we have the often with vegetable every year. It's every person else. That's our first focus is to get those snacks. But there's some other high items that we don't actually talk about, but not open is a. Fully cooked deep crumble that has all the fat drained out and it's labor savings. Quick and say it's and some of it's like, so a lot of menu planning goes in that, but also offered by the state, state is very strict. Tracking portions ounces. Or anything that's that, so what you say you're adding. Yeah, that's a process that is called. But bizarrely, the state. Likes that because they can track exactly how many calories and facts that. You're hard. So any of our other things, we need free points too, right? So. It would be great if they sort of things. All made and we try to whenever possible as sort of chef style, style. But in the eyes of the state. They would need to have certified recipes to say that what you're serving is the actual eating requirements. Theory really good for a person to care about.
Is that why, and I'm doing this from memory a little bit. I'm trying to pull up the menu, but. The last week's or the breakfast menu.
Yeah.
See you simple.
Yeah. Yeah, so the breakfast, so the breakfast, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what makes up a reimbursement breakfast? So everything's got little brain things, brains. Brain day, right? And they have that offer a half cup to go to the house. So of those three items, they need to be in. Two, we make it first, most of our customers. You're right. Um, and brains are the big ones. So we need to count the brains as a one or two. Uh, we do try to offer breakfast sandwich. It may be the offerings, um, because you know, you really have something, something to offer. Really try to encourage. Um, just participate in. The, the. Chop saving the brain makes easy to stir as a bag I own. As we've heard, they say breakfast sandwiches, at the end of the day, it's, it's a waste. Free pack and say yes, maybe not, you know, but they know food waste loss. Like area. Us now, you did be, sorry. Keep some, keep some in the. Easy for this to be continued to the bottom of the box. So, um, we certainly here for all the ideas and suggestions. And the vendors we offer you will list if I don't send. Personal standards and we provide those products and it's service and support of eating pool. What items are equal to viral. And some of those items. Based on cost. So in the week and cost of all the cost.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was just free.
It's disappointing, like and and it's a, I don't touch. I just. The purpose is provide nutrition. I don't. I understand you have guidelines you have to live in, right? And and.
Early in what I thought. But based on. There's some items that have stayed as we have. But it also spiders it is like. And you see total pops out there and carries, you know, kind of things. Those are up serious. Those are all produced sugars. And they're not the ones that probably buy it stolen, but they are still. With just a lot of.
I'm, I'm chomping at the bits to give you a little bit of financial summary. So last year we budgeted six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. To help supplement the program if we needed. We didn't use that money at all. So that helped us in other areas. But last year. We brought in about a hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. With all of the grants and students paid for it, other reimbursements. And the program cost us a full year, a hundred and seventy one thousand. Forty eight and D D O and cookies in the minutes. That means that we have seventeen thousand. And well seventeen thousand sixty eight dollars to start the year. We need that to pay for people coming in, in to work, if they're moving in. But we need that to buy some more food and then other things and supplies. Okay, so that takes care. And that's your, and year before that. We again budgeted about sixty five hundred. The cost in the budget, actual expenses was zero. A year before that, when we were getting a lot of reimbursement. The board of that budget paid four thousand fifteen dollars. That was the COVID time. But of course, you know, the program probably cost us, we will go with hundred and eighty thousand. Okay, the year before. Board of that cost was thirty seven thousand one hundred three dollars. We thought it was some price increases. A year before that, twenty thousand five hundred. A year before that, twenty two, two hundred. And the year before that, twenty one, eight hundred. So. We might be moving back to the twenty thousand dollar range. In the future, and we have to watch that. And we do believe that the legislators want to do something. To help all children because when they paid free breakfast and free lunch. That was a tremendous economic boost. To families and they'll be served forty two thousand meals. That's. You know, that was really amazing. So, you know, this is where we are. It gives you an overview and I think we really made some good progress with this. Next year, we've got about six thousand eight hundred dollars. We might have to use it this year. Depending upon that school lunch decision that they're making. So this is where we are. Okay? So I need a motion for setting the breakfast lunch and milk, you know. So that we can publish those in the newsletters. Okay?
Okay, before we do a motion, there's that's one more question.
Yeah.
Um, on the cost of the full rate for breakfast and lunch, is that covering our cost? Or like how much does it cost us to deliver a breakfast and a lunch?
Um, it really kind of depends how many kids show up for breakfast. Do you so? Um, you know, if you figure in a factor in the labor component piece. Um, it. Reason how I would say that we're probably, what we try to do is we utilize the. Fruit commodity, we're running about thirty five cents a piece. So we have to, by standard offer of a variety enough to we do that three flavor or a one percent white. They're about thirty three cents a unit for a white and thirty five for for chocolate. And then if we utilize the government fruit cups and theory, you know, the applesauce cup or strawberry cups and things like that, there isn't real cost to us. And then the grain-based items are anywhere from probably forty to sixty five cents a piece. So. You're, if you do it right, you're around a dollar, but then you have to factor in your labor component. So if you're saying some days when we were. Full pay and and the, the kids weren't really coming in. And you're only doing twenty eight breakfasts a day. You know, you're not making a ton if you could save bringing in the staff. Early just to sell the breakfast. So that's a labor component that factors in. Maximizing participation really just reduces the amount of the box through, so.
Good question.
Yeah, I, I mean, part of it's true that like forty cents is just a weird number. For breakfast, like.
Uh, thirty would be thirty, thirty cents for breakfast.
Oh, thirty cents, sorry.
It reduced, yeah.
Yeah.
It is an.
Isn't that? I don't know if I ever. Finding thirty cents, but the thirty cents is for the reduced, thirty cents reduced, sorry, on two seventy five.
Yeah, this is, this is wrong. It's, it's two fifty for breakfast, thirty cents. Cents for reduced breakfast, which will be zero for them.
Yeah, yeah.
And then full cost for lunch is three seventy five.
I was reading it and.
Yeah, so sorry, I came in right in the.
Now, then, Tom, do you have an estimate? It's not in the numbers. But what we saved by using the commodities, the free commodities?
So, so, um. The, the way the commodities work is you get a, you get almost like a debit card reloady for the year prior. So just this past February. We had a number of around eight thousand that we could forecast the purchase for purchases coming up in the next school year in the government. So. So about eight thousand, if we used it right, um, that just reduces your food costs.
And my numbers do not include the free commodities. That's just a, a variable. And sometimes you, you get special deals as well. So they're gonna release like. Fifty more pounds of hamburger or something. So, you know, the commodities is not in the numbers. But it's coming into the district, okay?
Helps offset the costs for sure. So I, I think what Adam was talking to about, you know, the, the amount of meals we did serve, I think it's important to just note that, you know, during the process, once COVID hit and we were giving away all those free reduced meals. We're able to pretty much overhaul a whole kitchen during that time. You know, we have a brand new walk-in freezer. You know, we have the dish machine. It's been perfect. We, we've, uh, we've worked with some, with Brian and I'm not sure exactly how funding went with a little bit, but we had some issues with some drain where. Um, there's air conditioning in there. I'm not sure that number's in there, but we did do move up and we did do a hot, new hot holding. Um, warming boxes and we have a lot of smaller where we put the spoons and the tongs and the pans and things like that. So. You know, during that time, it also gave us a chance to kind of upgrade, um. Um, be- because we're a nonprofit food services account. We run little independently from the board budget. You know, you really can't take any of that money. It's not earmarked just federally. School lunch, we can't have too much either. So. You know, that money, you're encouraged to reinvest in the program. I think they've done a good job in that. Like over the last, you know, three or four years. Kitchen is pretty much.
Where it needs to be.
Yeah, that's precious.
One, um, one last question that is probably not for you, but you might know about it is the, how we account for balances and the school lunch, you know. Whatever they do, our school does it for the big kids, but then the like lower schools all like checks and things.
Yeah.
Um, it's probably any question, but. Perhaps we can suggest, this is just throwing out there that when they get their, you know, welcome home letters, that they get a, a current balance of what you're looking at because just. Parents don't know what they have in place or what they need to, maybe they're in the, in the red or something, but.
Yeah.
Um, I know they're great about if you're in the red, they send to left, but it's, it's, I mean, they're probably way, way on top of this, but. Just maybe.
Yeah, okay. That is a challenge too, um.
Yeah.
Collecting money is something you certainly don't want. Have to spend a whole lot of time nearly. Well, they first people like to be on that for free reduce. Well, yeah, and and more than the order identified service, but. That, that can be a problem. It's too bad, but you know, uh, maybe I were gonna want, I'm waiting for. I got a better way to reach out and select them all the time. And no, it's. There's other software out there that's like for fast, but with that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna start a little vice.
Yeah.
You know, like there.
You, you can see your first year across the door. And that is now better. Actually, our digital, you know, you get busy, you don't always remember. It's not much. You don't always connect with them. If you lunch today. I certainly remember.
And you're already in love. It's like you sent a big jacket. You know, like little, little style and it's like, I don't remember how much I gave or what. Yes, so. And I agree for that notice. But I guess that's not fair.
And you don't know the kid who brought the brown bag, decided on the piece, piece set and. Yeah, it wasn't so. So.
And that's not the care of your security, so. If I love. Quickly. I'm on the pay or not, so I'm believing.
We never want to assist more of a. Maybe not for the parents, you guys getting. Like this partner.
Okay, we have, um, we have ten more motion now for the, for the process. More questions? Okay, a motion for the board to approve students paying three seventy five for lunch. And fifty cents for milk and two fifty for breakfast. Sure. Favor? Close the heart. Process. Well, thank you very much, Tom. I'll let you know if we have other questions and. We have something to bring here, whatever. What's happening back?
And I understand. Certain practices, certain lists of doubt, lots of, you know. Needs to be part of this. She's surveying.
Yeah, I feel like that's like the poplar with the box, I think, I think there are a lot, you know, and it's like it's. We understand your side of it, but it's, it's. We had a very, just the alternative, say yes, it was no one, what they quickly. Be a whole.
But a lot of that should be of one, uh, procedure that are personally, really tell us. Really varies to all the items that the state decides and so, right? So Thursday, it's, it's, their game is great, right? Some of it is so varied too, that they might hear of their race to start September. By whatever, we lost three, probably a lot of such the two that have to serve. So. And they are, we're a sweep the day of base, but I think. So some of those things do happen and then here it's not really said, and. Maybe they don't rate it to this outfit. Uh, if you return it, it's, it's sometimes harder to return something. Uh, and it is, it's. Some of those things.
On the year, the, the price really, the bunch to the four, you know. That was. The year, the, the price really, the monster for, you know, that was an emergency affair with some teams, unsure what we, you know, prepared, but that was, you know, that was like four years ago, but, you know, that year. That was a anomaly, but we usually can stay ahead of our equipment. The other thing is that we have to go into the limited funds, I typically, uh, started paying for salaries, like the assistance or or something like that, so that we had a very consistent item to pay for, because the commodities and materials and other things, you know, can change from year to year.
One of those challenges, they, what they probably see in retail, it's not maybe stayed like, just a big connection, um. And that goes for kitchen, but the boss, you could get fifteen years out, period, you may pay them a little bit. Now that comes into nine-year kind of range, and it's sort of maybe even dropping, so those kind of things. You know, the challenges that we all face, those are real, it's a lot of things.
What are the restrictions, it's hard, like working with a farm?
Oh, that's, that's a very great question.
Like eggs. They, they, they're still making people's chickens call in town, like if they had everybody to like, well, you know, buy the other things that we can. Is there a research on that?
Uh, some of those, uh, I have a pair of the protein items that are, there's a big push for like old farm stuff, like people create or people base, and so. Uh, but, you know, I've tried to really reach out a little bit and find some people, we have a few, um. What we really need is to find somebody consistently give us what we need, right? It's great in August and September, it's data was, that's what I said, right, so, we weren't these stuff, but if anybody does know, um. State of Connecticut is really, uh, encouraged those school districts to make connections for both the partners, so. Um, certainly, you know, anybody who do that, or perhaps, or maybe strawberry or a big vinegar, or some of the books. It's, 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 it's nowhere, you know, and some of those, they were out, they were choosing, and garbage are quite known, and they're like, oh, they're right. Come back and like catch up on, uh, the, the big one here about this. And, and somebody who calls stories and produces consistent, some of them. If you have a, a relationship, getting one of the benefits, a lot of, I think, about working out, they don't, I think I gave them a fail last year today. There really is Scott's kind of slide, uh, a lot of challenges, I think. Uh, we would love that action there, to figure out how, for the district, so. But we love. Right?
All of the stuff with farmers. Right. Yeah, well, thank you for your effort, for sure, there's, uh, people to be done, but, right, if you're the budget of the tax, it helps money, it's, it's worth it, so. It's time to break.
Yeah. Big one.
Yeah.
Big one, yeah.
Sure.
First one, if you, now, if I, this, 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 this.
Okay. Good to hear from Tom. Uh, we can move on to the consent agenda, there was a motion to prove it as presented, what's, that.
Motion.
Favor? Close, Mark, will she passes? Launch administrative reports.
Yes, uh, Amy is not here tonight, obviously, uh, summer school is really going great. Uh, that ends on the seventeenth, and we start our special debate with the next day, but, uh. You know, there's been a lot of activity with things, one of the things that's happened is we, we want a grant, we've got thirty-three thousand, the right to read, plus eleven thousand, there's another way to read. And there's been teachers in the building working on curriculum and doing things within the science meeting. And we had a number of people who signed up for that, while summer school was using the last seventy-six hundred dollars of the Yesr free grant, which has to be expended by September thirtieth. And we've met all of the requirements for, you know, the grant, but, uh, there's a number of teachers who are working and we, we were able to pay them to help come in, and we did increase the staff. Uh, I'm not gonna go over every item on Amy's report, but, uh, you could read through that, and, uh, if you had any questions. Certainly, I would, uh, like to answer those. One of the things Amy and I talked about was, uh, surveying, survey results, and, you know, uh, we do have those, and we also talked about the S-PAC results. Where the S-PAC were a little bit delayed on some of the testing results, but we would like to bring those back to you within September, and then also the surveys, uh, you know, uh, we, we could wait until September, but Amy said, you know, if you need her for the August meeting, she can come back to review that. But, uh, you know, it's, it's something that's important to do, but we have time, uh, to go over that. That's it.
I just didn't notice that they, um, showed there was interest in the fall soccer team, so that they're gonna go ahead and pursue that, that's great news.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have specific questions for Amy at this point, so we can. Go on. Lloyd, report now.
Yeah, this is Director of Student Services, there's just some of the numbers that are happening, and, uh, Lloyd, uh, you know, uh, has had a busy time with the transition and, uh, working, uh, with students, um. There has been a, a little bit of a roller coaster ride with students who, um, are, you know, who have withdrawn or coming into the district requiring special ed, uh, I'll have the, uh, financial numbers for you. But we won't know a certain until after October first, where that's the deadline for, you know, the, uh, PSIS, the student enrollment. And that's the time when, at October meeting, when you really look at your numbers, because students aren't allowed to change high schools. And of course, by that time, we've had, uh, you know, people moving in the summer and making transitions or exiting our school district. I will tell you this, uh, I'm monitoring one outplacement that is a twelfth grader. And right now, we have listed in the budget a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And yes, yes, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and if that student grad, you know, finishes twelfth grade, we still have to do a transition program, but the transition program would cost about a hundred and twenty-five. So for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which I'm doing right now, we could see a savings.
That's until age twenty-two, correct?
That's what?
Until age twenty-two?
A hundred and twenty-two thousand, Chris, yeah.
No, it's about age one, two, yes.
We'll get until eight, yes, you're right, they, they added more time for that. But, uh, the other thing is the, uh, transition programs, you know, in some cases, don't have to be full-time. Because it's beyond high school, so, you know, uh, you know, we have options that are available. But we're already, uh, talking about plans, you know, with that family and, and making sure that we have an action plan.
Plus different transition programs for all different ones.
That's a little bit of a savings, okay, for the twenty-five, twenty-six.
I, I thought I'd know what the difference would be, it's not a big difference.
Yes. And, uh, it's just one of those, uh, things with making sure, and we do everything we can
Have to.
to meet the needs of students, and that's, that's, that's why we're here, and, uh, we make adjustments to that.
Um, in a May meeting, we had asked Amy and Lloyd to give a readout, uh, the system that they had implemented to ensure that students' Bible boards and IEDs were being carried out.
Yes.
I didn't see that that was in the June.
Yes, Lloyd has his numbers here, and he's been attending, uh, you know, Amy does the five oh fours at BES. Lloyd does the high school, and then, uh, Lloyd does all of the PPTs. And, uh, you know, he has been ahead of that, and, uh, even, you know, some awareness communication, now.
How dare to do what you're asking, it's more about supervision, about how.
They, they, they implemented a system in September to make sure that the teacher.
Supervision system?
I don't know what it.
It has to be supervision, it can't be any other.
I don't know, but they were.
Format.
They had implemented something to make sure, at least my understanding was that the individual requirements or the things that were in students' educational plans were being carried out in the classroom. So not, not the attendance of that, the meetings, but how does that plan become?
Okay, well, we're bringing the parents in for one more day, it was, it's available for the opening of school, the teachers have three days, they have Monday and Tuesday, the parents now come in for the, you know, the one day and Tuesday, and then there's meetings at the beginning of the year to go over the specifics of, you know, the IEDP. And when I was running the special education of school, I had a, I had a nine-hundred-and-fifty-student school. And one of the criteria was that first week, then you had team meetings, you went over you know, all of the recommendations in the five oh four plans, and you met with a classroom teacher and made sure that they knew, well, specifically the accommodations.
Right, so this is the follow-up from that meeting, so then how do we make sure that those, like, people are being, are being held?
Oh, yes, yes.
And keep you. Amy implemented a new system that, that was, so that they eventually better track, I think, they were escaping that, that plans were not being followed, or may not be being followed, and they, they go back to the baby minutes to look, that I, I know I had asked for a readout, um. That this was still implemented in September, so I understand how it's like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda then for the September meeting. But there's an incredible amount of time spent with that, and if there was something that was missed, then I certainly would like to know about that and the specifics, and if a parent is coming up to you, I would want you to refer them to me, so that there can be follow-ups. But this is something to be relentless of, because, you know, there's an IEDP, there's a five oh four, and and, you know, we want to follow the best.
We're going to, so, but, okay, wait, okay. So, but in terms of like, this is a big, like, new bias system that tracks it, now comes down, I'm, in a sense, you're kind of supervision changes, or.
Right, what, what, because there's a thing like that. I think with the whole, like, going for, kind of paper, like, you know, the, the follow-up question that is that this, or not that followed, that means, or, but the plan was being followed, yeah. And so that's like, what happens, and what percentage?
We said that, yeah.
And so percentage of these plans, something same, like, turn up being, like, and we're, we did miss something, we're gonna make a save. Listen.
Usually she's taken care of, and there are legal meetings. I think meetings for five or four years, I'm sure. People like, in any case, just you, it's not, it's obvious.
Without them, yeah, just a strategy, it's capable, and there's a, you know, as I've heard. Just to have to, for that, please, maybe, no.
Okay, good. That's, yeah. Got that, so, yeah. So I have for, the Director of Student Services. Now, go ahead and superintend, okay?
Do you have my, uh, calendar of events? District enrollment report for the last day of school was two thirty-eight, with students and a hundred and twenty-seven high school students. Uh, we'll get the, uh, beginning of the year in the next, at the next meeting. Uh, a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents has been returned to the town. Um. The school, there's, there's going to be another revision in the school calendar, we, uh, it's on the agenda later. You know, anyway, there's just one day, uh, we had to change from a, a twelve-month business to a month-end business. You have a listing of the district level committees and curriculum ratings, you know, committees. Uh, there's the twenty-four, twenty-five staff assignments. There's a document in there that talks about posting advertising, interviewing, and selecting highly qualified faculty and staff. There's the K-CAPS convention flyer, there's the page, obviously, flight, flight levels, the June ninth. Uh, and then, uh, caps, uh, published a hundred and twenty-eight pages for legislative summary for the state. Now, this involves all of you, I didn't publish it, but if you want a copy, I have it, you can read through it. And this is the time when we, I'm saying, people, you know, would you, you know, maybe keep it for a minimum, but you as board members are responsible for implementing this, so throughout this year, as things come in with these things to implement, that would be on our agenda, okay? But it was, this year was a hundred and twenty-eight pages long, with, uh, legislative initiatives. Okay, I passed out a document, it's on the table, and, uh, I, I gave you, uh, like, the first one is the solar panel and electricity update. And you have, uh, twenty-three, well, it's supposed to be twenty-three, twenty-four at the, uh, first top, and then you have, uh, excuse me, twenty-two, twenty-three, that was a title. But, uh, you know, two years ago, then last year, uh, we wound up, uh, having a summary report. If, if you look down the bottom for twenty-three, twenty-four on the solar end, uh, it actually, uh, shows you zero for the supply and zero for the supplies. So we did have a drop in the cost, and that's because, uh, we had some savings when the old, with the solar panels. And we're carrying forward three thousand, three hundred and sixty kilowatt hours. If you notice, there's the cost of the delivery. And then there's also the total for the month, and then on top of that, we have, and, and monthly charge for for the CT solar panels, and then they have an adjustment at the end of the year, so we could get a rebate or we could get a charge, and they don't know until it's the end of the year. And then the bus depot cost about seventy-three, seventy-four dollars a month. And then if you look down, there's a summary of the total cost of electricity, and as you can see, you know, we've been spending about sixty-some thousand, but in the proposed budget for next year, we have sixty-eight thousand, seven forty-one, and that just gives you a trend, if you look the, the year that the solar panels were activated in December, that means we had a half year, the cost of that was seventy-two thousand, five twenty-one. Are we saving money with the solar panels, yes, could we possibly pay more? Uh, or less, and possibly less, but there has to be a long-term planning. Uh, there is a, we've got a fixed rate for three years on our, uh, cost of electricity, and we moved to, uh, another company. I wanted to mention that we have a solar panel committee that meets as needed, and I will send this out to them. And, uh, one of the things that we always ask for is, uh, peak performance numbers, because the cost of electricity is set by the peak performance of every month. Because the cost of electricity is set by the peak performance of every month. So that if you have a review of your peak performance annually. And you're not using as much electricity, then we get, you know, less of a projection, okay? We're still, you know, we're still working with the. You know, C T solar or the solar panels. In some ways, I would like to, you know, eventually consider what if we purchased. The solar panels, because they're gonna be. Well, we we they were installed of. Twelve fifteen, two thousand sixteen, so they're gonna be eight years old. But what is it to cost that? And if we did purchase them. We'd have electricity coming right into the building. There could be potential savings with that. But that's something that the solar panel committee would need to review.
Right, but if you purchase them and then they become obsolete, then you're the one who's responsible for the removal of them. Company.
The company sends somebody out twice a year to check on them. And but we have to clear all the brush away.
Right, but who's responsible if they become obsolete and no longer operational, who's responsible?
We would become responsible.
So regardless, we're responsible of the and getting rid of them if they.
We have to, that's one of the things that the committee does, Val, review where life. And and they review that. The other thing that I want them to review. And this is an interesting process.
If we if we purchase them, then we're in charge, but if we don't purchase them or we continue to leave them, then the company is. Because I wonder what that possibility.
Well, these are all things that the committee would have to review and answer. I can't answer those questions that come up, you know, within the committee. There's also another thing that I need to review with them. Because there's two different types of solar panels. There's the mono. Which costs a little bit more, but they offer twenty five percent savings. And then there's the polycrystalline. And there's some, you know, pretty interesting, you know, figures with that. I'm not gonna have a meeting right off and be able to come back, but. These are some of the things that the solar panel committee would review. And then, you know, come back and give us recommendations. But are we saving money? Yes.
Transportation.
Yeah, the the it was the next page that was just. The the cost of transportation. And on the cost of transportation, these are actual actual, you know, expenditures. But up above is what we did for the first sixteen years. And then we had, you know, twenty one, twenty two, we spent forty nine, four ninety six. For transportation, but that was during the time of COVID. We we had shorter bus runs because sometimes eighty percent of the parents would drive in the kids. As an option. And then twenty two, twenty three, we spent five hundred and sixty four. And there were some repairs that started. Last year, we spent five hundred and sixty two thousand. And then for the budget for next year, we have six hundred forty three thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars. Now, just before the board meeting, we faxed the purchase order. Seventy six thousand seven hundred and ninety four dollars for the purchase. Of the handicap van. And I hope that they get that built this summer. And that will accommodate two chairs, wheelchairs. And we also are having it a setup so that you can attach to nine. Seats in there if you're not using it for wheelchair accessibility. We get our diesel with the town. Last year was three, three dollars and nineteen cents a gallon, next year it's gonna be two dollars and ninety three cents. Okay, hot up the press. This is just the first reading for you to review. And this is the Chromebook. Device loan agreement. This device loan agreement is what we've been using for grades five through eight. And then on the next page, this is new. Quite frankly, this is very similar to the loan agreement that Chris has. And Mike and Amy just worked on this, but you can see that insurance option. You know, there's a twenty dollar insurance payment that protects you. But the the other option is, no, if something happens, so. The family should be responsible for that. And dividing insurance and soon full responsibility, so there's options. But this is just the first reading. And Amy did a little more research on it, you have a policy, right? And, you know.
Yes, we did.
But I will tell you, just, I was debating on whether if the industry or not tonight. Plus, it just came in, you know, yesterday afternoon. But I thought you might want to get a heads up what's happening. Because of the thing that's happening, and Amy is unhappy with what's happening with the phones. Because they take from home.
And to a comment, we should have had something like this in itself. And the question is, two hundred dollars enough to pay for Chromebooks? Should we up that to hundred dollars?
He gets some pretty good prices, so, you know, on on equipment. And I think, you know, we we want a thirty a time, so, you know, and. We've been fortunate, we've been able to use a lot of grant money. When they when they moved into COVID, we were given free Chromebooks since that time. And you could just write out what you wanted in the stand setting to consult. You know, we took this advantage of all those.
And in one year, and it's like, we'll be all that damage done. So the damage that could be done in one year.
Yes, but but the damage is done, we have placed.
The kids, that's true.
Right. That's a good review, but it it makes not to have a. You know, insurance policy. They need to have insurance.
The the other thing is the. We've got a great on tuition. The the state. And there's a thing from Learn on the Marine Science Magnus School. Our budget included six thousand four hundred nine dollars, but. The tuition now has been set at three thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars, so. We're gonna save a little bit on that tuition account, I think it's like a little over ten thousand dollars. But it's already taken another area of the country because we have some sure that's coming in. Please remember the wall of.
Take a reading, that's good, okay.
Okay, and that that just came in, and I was so, I was really happy. Okay, we're gonna do a whole school evacuation. You have the newsletter on that Wednesday or through the ninth. And we've been doing that for quite a while. And that's my report, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, why have a rainy day for that? I mean, if it's raining. When you train, you should train for the worst eventuality, frankly, is. You know, it could put a little added wrench to it. Yeah, they might not even need a rain drain, a rainy day for an evacuation.
Know that they had schedules. You had, so it was actually a really bad day when they did.
It was coming outside.
It was, yeah.
Good.
Yes. Okay, well, that's great summary, I think. If we're in the old business, I feel like we've covered. A lot of the federal state grant updates.
Yes, I I will write a summary report by continuing to write about. Each of the grants that we received in the last few years to the minutes. Because we have met all of the deadlines and are in compliance for expanding the grants. And there's a story be behind that that is really old. But we will be reading stories about school districts with tremendous deficits. Because we use the grants to fund needed projects, we did not replace anything in the school budget. And that's that's important, except for the summer. When we have the summer needed, you know, we're supposed to do address learning loss for that seven six hundred. As part of the Esther grant, and we use that money up rather than using board. But that's that's just mine, ours to build the budgets. Okay.
The capital improvement plan?
Yes. Let's see. I think I I I wrote something about that. Yeah, I wanted to find something just to make sure that I'm on. The same page as the as the board. As the consent agenda committee reports. And then there was. Okay. Moving on. To this one. Okay, in the. In the capital improvement plan. The CHM HVAC is being worked on right now. And that project is costing a hundred and ninety one thousand. Of dollars, we took ninety five thousand two seventy two from the Esther grant. And the HVAC funds that we had from the town, ninety six dollars, so that's paid, that's paid for. We had the central office. R F P go out for the HVAC system. In the central office and the final projected cost is eighteen thousand four fifty, I'll talk about that later. The kindergarten classrooms, the sixteen nine five zero is a solid number. So those three projects are all funded. Then we are going out with R F Ps for the special ed. Of classrooms and then the remaining funds, I'm not sure of the balance because we have to complete the R F P process. Is going on, okay, the fire alarm panel. We had a building committee meeting this week. And it's not only the fire panel. That needs to be replaced, all of the connections to the classrooms. So this could, this could go as high as two hundred and fifty thousand. And it's just a complete redo, replacing the generator about a hundred and twenty seven thousand. Yeah.
On the fire panel, do you have an estimate of how long it takes to do that?
Um.
Not yet, not yet.
No, no, I don't have that. But Jody has reassured us over and over that the repairs that we're doing are gonna be okay. And he's aware of it, and he came into the last meeting and he gave us those reassurances. But if anything happens, we will fix it immediately. So that we have to have, we have to have a fire alarm system. But the the fire alarm panel, the. The generator and the sliding gym door. At the building committee meeting the other day, they said, let's put that aside. From all the grant money and Ronnie Milovich said, don't use your 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 operating budget to repair those. That's a town thing. And we need to talk to the selectmen about what a long term thing is, now they have a lot of things coming up. You know, roads, fire department, but the thing is, we have to put that into a mix. And, you know, there's a way to, you know, just review that with the town to see what happens, okay? But the timelines for doing it, it's not an emergency anymore. Okay, now. I think I, did I send something out on the. Oh, okay, with the. With the R F Ps. Okay, the building committee made a motion to accept New England Service and Controls. For eighteen thousand four fifty for the central office. Replacement, and I will tell you, I can't work in my office right now, it is, it's just not working, it's. It's it's not good. And we had two other quotes, one was for twenty eight thousand eight hundred. And another was for sixty thousand five twelve. So we went with the eighteen thousand four fifty, I knew you smiled. So I, the the building committee made a motion to approve going to them. And I would like to have the Board of Ed vote to approve the building committee's decision. To accept a quote, R F P from New England Service and Controls. And the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the central office HVAC system. If you approve it tonight, this is using town funds that that were returned, that were, you know, set aside for us. Then I hope we can start this as soon as possible.
Motion.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay, now the next one is.
It passed, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. The committee, the building committee made a motion, and I'm putting these in the minutes because I like to document. How the building committee made a decision and the Board of Ed verified that. To approve the decision by to to approve. Okay, New England Service and Control in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. For the kindergarten HVAC rooms thirty six and thirty seven. Now, just to give you an example, we got a lot of quotes on this. One was for twenty one thousand four hundred, another one was for thirty seven eight hundred, another one was for thirty two thousand six hundred. Another one was for twenty seven thousand, twenty thousand, and then twenty nine. So, you know, the sixteen thousand nine fifty was an excellent price. And the, you know, the company is local and they're really looking to establish a relationship. So we need a motion for the board to, you know, approve the building committee decision.
Motion. On favor.
Aye.
Now, we still have a couple of other projects that we're working on. The building committee, it's it's next meeting is, you know, August twenty sixth. We may wind up, just because we have so many projects going on. Coming back in time for the September board meeting to make some additional decisions. And by then, we may have talked to Tracy to see about what happens with the plan of action. The building committee might invite Tracy and just to talk to her. But please remember, this building committee was formed to process ESER funds. And then in the process, we have sliding doors that need attention, fire alarm panels. And the generators, so, you know, the committee really is aware of the processes. And the determined process of the town with R F P and gathering quotes, truth be seen, is worth it.
Questions on that? Well, now. The we belong to Ed number three, the N F A contract.
I will, I will tell you this, that all of the other partner school districts have approved. The new N N F A agreement. Uh, you know, Nate is sending me a copy. Of the uh, you know, uh, regarding audit and and other things. But you can see, I've included the uh old agreement. And then there's two pages of the summaries of changes. And then there is the new agreement. Now, uh, you know, we can go over this line by line. But I will tell you that the, you know, the party school districts knit on a regular basis. Uh, you know, of course, we had input and, uh, you know, I had Dan Murphy work on recommendations for us. Uh, and when I met with Nate Queston last summer, uh. You know, I I started a conversation with NFA doesn't know how much they're spending on special ed. And he said, yes, we do. It's in our budget. And I said, no, you require us to send a para home to NFA. You have no idea what I'm spending on that para. And I said, you know, uh, it would be better perhaps if NFA supplied the para. And then we could pay for, you know, a child might not need all time forty hours of leave. So they could control the schedule, they could find a substitute. Well, he included that in this and made some adjustments with making sure that there's accommodations. They did not change the enrollment based on the October first. But as far as I'm concerned, that does help with offering some consistency. Because I know, you know, what what our budget is gonna be for the following year. And we had a surge in in uh in enrollment and then we had a drop. So last year, we had to pay a premium, but this year, you know, uh, it it did change. As a matter of fact, uh, you know, the tuition with uh with NFA for us. Uh, you know, went from uh. What I didn't take out last year's, but that was an interesting story. Uh, it went from uh. Well, we we did, we did save, uh, you know, quite a lot of money. I think it was over a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, for the budget we have for this year. But I I could, you know, really, you know, I accepted the the October first thing. You can look this over, uh, I'm I'm not sure.
Go with the para, para, the para.
Okay, so I'm going to borrow some of your space. It's all right. Okay, so as far as approaching this and what might be the best approach. You know, I mean, the board could go to approve the agreement, which all the other partner school districts demand. But so at the next meeting, I hope to have a, you know, signed contract, you know, by NFA and um and what's happening. It was a lot of time.
Really helpful, this this list of changes and things that went on. Great that they put this together.
It's good that they're responsive too to all the sending schools. They used to have an attitude down there where where NFA top clarified the school. And it's their, they're taking their counsel of all the sending schools and forth.
Right.
Yeah, we're customers.
Yeah, their own town too. I mean, it's gotta be a new one.
Well, I will tell you, Nate Queston is 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 pretty human. He's he's the real deal and the, he's been very, very responsive. And uh, you know, he changed things around there with the discipline, there's no question about that. And we did not have any incidents since last year at all. And so, you know, and uh, he was only gonna meet with me for about a half hour. And we met for an hour and a half, so, and you know, he can really listen very carefully. But uh, you know, when I was appreciative of the things, we voted. So I don't know, do you wanna vote tonight? I mean, all of the other partner school districts.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
It was impressive hearing him in the dress house too. Much more than Joel Ryan or that.
Yeah, we're um. Done a lot. Seeing it firsthand, just with, you know, being there a lot this year, it's, I I can see, I can see it's sure.
Because enthusiasm and passion will show through, we need to.
Yeah. So it's good to see this in the in the. The defeat that's gone into the both partnerships.
And Arica agrees. She knows more than any of us about the culture.
It is, it's built. More fun, the kids feel good.
Yeah.
They feel good.
Okay, and now, uh, the safety on Route one thirty eight.
You have the information on that.
She.
You've you've got a response.
And then I didn't see it because it was on my other.
Oh, I I, oh, I left it in the other room.
I would pull it up right now, but it's not on this.
Tracy wrote back a short but brief paragraph. She she actually came up with a possible six week, six to eight week thing with the state doing something. Bless her, you know, it's just taken forever. If these were local roads. School site governance, cool, we would have had something in there immediately.
Years ago.
But but you you have to go through all the state protocols, but uh.
It was from where we were last time, when interesting thing was that I um, there, they have a couple of those. Uh, signs that actually tell you your speed. Which I did, that wasn't part of the original pers- uh proposal, but they have some that. For a variety of reasons of why our one thirty is so dangerous. I think that we've been gifted some of those signs as well and those are usually, you see those mostly in um. I s- like, do they have one on thirty two? So I can't say they're all like non, non group, public routes. But I usually do my back roads, like towns can put them in a back roads and show you. Like um, uh, those kind of flashing signs, but um, so that's good news for us that we can add that to it as people are approaching a bold fence.
That'll be permanent, part of our school's own sign.
I don't, I don't have the solar. The other one's solar, the one that's gonna just flash at you, telling you when it's gonna come. I don't know if it's gonna replace it, but at least it's. There's talk about the pole that needs to be installed and like, you know, we're getting, we're getting into real details now, so it's. Yeah, she's like, I don't, town or Brian's really could, maybe the town, the basic goal, but I think there. Seems like it's a little bit on how flexible the state needs to provide resourcing.
Who pays for all that? The state because it's their road and. And second, you go to Salem, this, you must know Salem because you live down in mine, the schools they have. The school signage on the Salem Elementary School is leaps, it it's just so much, it's what we've been wanting for years. It's the same type of road.
Rest of the land as well, um, the one we're looking at, they have it. I've never seen it blinking, but I don't go up the towers, I guess, but. It's the same, I'm looking like, oh, that's exactly what we're looking at, so hopefully they work.
I I will include Stacy's wording in the minutes.
Yeah, um, yeah, we'll do the Tracy. Tracy's update will get in there on the safety one three, then Tracy in advance, so I exactly like it was. Let's just get an update. Moving to I am number five is administrative goals, um, four twenty four, twenty five. Uh, Dee Dee had gone through and made quite a few updates on that based on our last meeting, so I know in my reading, I felt comfortable with it.
I'll make a motion to pass it at the end.
Second. On favor? Opposed, unheard, motion passes to approve. The administrative goals. As presented. All right, then we have the self evaluation for the Board of Ed, the twenty three, twenty four. Um, I think we carried over a lot of those changes specifically to that, so Dee, now we're done that from last time. I think it's something. I I wanna charge upon us all, but definitely I'll take the rein on it, something maybe like a summary working document. That will work for us kind of in the. Maybe the consent agenda that we just have like something that's shorter and sweeter for us to think about, um. As we move forward getting to this point, so we can feel comfortable that we're looking at it on a regular basis. Um, but we have a motion to approve it as presented now.
Motion.
On favor? Opposed, unheard, motion passes. Prove self evaluation. We got a new business, we have a few personnel items. To go over.
Love the soccer coaches.
Yeah.
Euros.
Okay, so here we're gonna, uh, motion to approve Pete Trahan as a head soccer coach and Christine Palan as an assistant head soccer coach.
Motion.
On favor, or a motion first? Okay, who was the who the motion? Sarah?
I got Kristen.
Okay, perfect, okay, on favor. Opposed, unheard, motion passes. Congratulations Pete and Kristen for taking on our flying eagles. We have a motion to approve Amanda Gold as the summer school red regular ed teacher.
Motion.
Second, on favor. Opposed, unheard, motion passes. Thank you, Amanda. A motion to approve Lydia Snyder as a first time Sovietian. On favor. The rule is not fair, motion passes. We have motion to approve Carissa Paul as a sacred art intern. On favor. Opposed, unheard, motion passes. I think that's all the personnel we needed. And move on to the title one coordinator homeless lady. With that, yeah, for that we have a motion to appoint Rachel Saum. As title coordinator and homeless lady. On favor. Opposed, unheard, motion passes. Rachel. And number three is the community conversation.
Yes, uh, about uh ten years ago, we did a community conversation, we invited. We, you know, a hundred people and we, we did get a grant for that one. And uh, you know, we fed everybody, then we broke down into groups. And uh, it was very good, but uh, this 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 memo talks about having a community conversation on Monday, December second. Now, there's no good time to have a meeting of a lot of people. No matter when you plan, everybody's busy, but yeah, I put down December second. Because that just seemed toward, and there's going to be a committee that works on this. And uh, I I haven't sent any notices out to the people on the committee to say, are you going to confirm this? But I will tell you this, we had moderators like uh, Jack Weser helped out ten years ago and I said. Wanna do a community conversation, Jerry said, I'm in. And what happens is we break down into smaller groups and then we write down what are priorities and there's a whole structure to this. And, you know, moderators go through some training to run a small group. But we go to the gym, maybe have pizza this time, break up into smaller groups, come back. You know, that for about an hour and fifteen minutes or so, and then we share the results. And from there, we we list everything and we develop priorities. Now, that's how we develop priorities for our strategic plan. But it's a, it's a good process, it works. And I called Tracy and I said, Tracy, you know, I don't want, you know, after that, Tracy was having. Meetings with all the chairs and all the committees. I said, Tracy, if I had a community conversation, Tracy said she's in. So we can do board bed and town things together and make an informed approach. And so this is just information, so I'll be updating you on what happens.
Okay, that's exciting. At least there's some structure around it. We talked about, oh, but at least it was out there. Next game, like for event. You know, we'll be helpful to them. Glad to help you with any type of topics or things that we, you know.
Well, we 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 list general topics and look for, uh, you know, things and people say what they want.
Budget preparation timeline.
Yes, okay, but if you know, I, in the seven eleven meeting, I had Board of Ed presentation. Uh, budget preparation timelines. I did get transportation and I did get electricity. I don't have a whole maintenance thing, but that's to come. And the other thing is, with within this year's budget, we still have a few little invoices. But oh, by the way, in the consent agenda, it said, we're returning fifteen thousand nine, fifteen dollars and ninety three cents to the town. And uh, you know, so we're we're on our way and hopefully by August, we can come out with an actual expenditure report. And then when I give that to you, last year's budget, next year's budget, that means that you're working with eight years of budget information. And uh, it does work, if we go with trends and other things that are relevant. And then uh, there are estimates, I still have to share this with Tracy. To see if it matches some of the things that that she saw, but of course, last year, we had a change. And rather than town meeting, there was a referendum in the state. And I can't thank the community enough for approving that budget. Because, you know, I was seeing what we had today. And they're able to, you know, hire people and uh, what a blessing that was. So uh, special thank you goes out to the community.
Now onto our policies, these are all first reading, so um, not sure, they're pretty quick to go, they're obsessed with this kind of. When the word is made here, proposing the agenda, she got in how hard advanced that was to be made, but not that with Stan. Which shadow twenty eight or twenty two, so what, do you wanna, I'll start with one twenty two. Why should one of us, okay, that's the first one, right?
We do have another policy that is just about the agenda, I don't know, that I was reading through too. And that one clearly states like.
When, how hard advanced.
Twenty four hours, if, you know, or forty eight hours, and then how many? Days after for the minutes. It's a separate policy than this. This is more like public participation.
This hasn't changed at all. It has the same requirements for the people to sit five minutes. They can't bring up specific. Dividuals and that, it was those issues.
Yeah.
See anything, I would, if you guys all agree, I need to approve this. It's a hero, right?
But I can add it into this one if you want it. Again, it's fine. In the one one two zero.
Yeah, it could be just.
One one two zero. Has it changed?
I think she's been asking to add in a more advanced. Yeah. Right, motion to approve one one two zero. Right, motion to approve one one two zero, um. As discussed.
Adding, adding then, yeah.
On favor? Opposed, unheard, motion passes. Policy one one five zero, shot to board members and school personnel. I thought it was planned, yeah. On favor?
Okay.
On favor? Make post. Stand, unheard, motion passes. Policy four one one two spot five two, four two one two.
This one we recently approved, but there was ano- another. Mandated wording that was added at the end that Darlena let us know about.
We just did.
We did, but this, we just had to, by mandated. Stuff had to add this additional wording at the end. Correct.
On favor?
Aye.
You both? Okay, um bylaw nine three two one, spot two, like five board donations. This is.
This has a provision that if we're having a board event meeting, like we did during COVID. There has to be an area where the public can come in with wonderful board members. And watch it in a public area, and that's what I got out of this.
Yeah, I I think I was reading it as well, saying, is that?
We all do that in our living rooms or offices and hobby room or.
They have the option to come and sit here with us now, but this was just updating a little bit of the wording. Uh a little bit, some of it. Accessible to the public. It got rid of some of the old um. Things, I'm trying to think exactly.
You think if it was hybrid. Everybody would lock in, but they still want in this policy a physical meeting area as well.
Yeah.
Where is that, because I I've never.
I think it's crossed off. Yeah.
Their public notice, one hybrid enforcement's last sentence of that followed to notice.
Yeah, there's more in here too.
Okay, thank you. Visions for members of the public, Mr. Chen, in the same location for members, yes, the meeting.
Yeah, page ninety seven, number four, really lazy.
Again, it's just updated wording from K because they got rid of some of the stuff that talked about. The, the. Executive orders, they got rid of those wordings, because it's no longer. An executive order things.
I'm sorry, it's page ninety.
It's okay.
Yeah, page number, I need number five.
They've informed the members of the board, attend a meeting by means electronic equipment from the same physical location. I meant members of the public to attend such meeting in such physical location. That have what we're doing now, thank you.
I mean, we have it as an option, you know.
Is this language required by? By law, right, it's not.
It's a bylaw. It was. I'd have to look at to see if it was on the recommended versus required.
Just moved to second reading, I just feel like I think like.
That's fine.
The other, it's lots of pieces, I just wanna make sure it, we're all comfortable with it too, because it kind of just sets our, what we're.
It's had a lot more changes to it, so.
Where somebody might be, like, next month, for instance, if like, we do have meeting, and I'm on vacation, I could maybe. Call in, but I swear.
Yeah.
I'd love to do that. But. Just wanna make sure that's, that it makes sense, like.
That's another thing too, is if we did need the quorum, you know, that's clarifies, like, you can't have a quorum if somebody's like Sarah, you know. Logged in. Yeah, yes, yeah.
If it's hybrid, this room would not.
Correct.
Right.
Versus lawyer, alright, that sounds good, we'll just.
Yeah.
And then we have the bylaw nine three two three, agenda construction.
Yeah, this was the one that was saying with the timeframe.
Okay.
I think this is. Yeah, it's the last.
On favor? Opposed, unheard, motion passes to the third. And final one is the bylaw nine three two four, meeting time.
There's others, it's a really good business.
It's quite interesting that the media has started with it, you know, that we don't, we barely, I know we really have, but sure, in other districts, it's, it's very much part of it, and.
Well, aren't disagreements a civil either? We just move on after our votes and. Many other times, they go after each other personally. Vicious, uncalled for.
I think there's a. It's a spot at twenty five, is that a twenty for subject matter or a maximum? Yeah, per meeting, twenty cents.
This is per subject matter here, that's a great question.
Is it a situation or group, okay? So I think the virtual has a. Okay, I have a maximum twenty. Per a five hundred and eleven landowner's studio with a vast amount of subject. So it's.
So do you want twenty? You want it to be twenty? Or you could rescind and you can amend it, I mean, that's as amended, so we can amend one more thing. But, thank you, yeah.
Is it twenty minutes for a subject matter, does that mean? If there are multiple subjects that they want to speak.
That's only four people that can talk. Yeah, like, so it's like four people can talk, it was twenty, they can make a five minute limit. That's what they have for for a person, so that's only four people that could talk about.
Right, they said first subject matter, so it is that forty five minutes. Taking into account there could be one of one subject. That is blue, yeah, one is speaker.
Right, yeah, right.
I was wondering if that was a disconnect between. Knows that the one who says five minutes to be allowed to speak speaker for a maximum forty five minutes. So they're, oh, okay, like, it's almost. Sentence, it's just.
Once twenty, once forty.
Determination on whether we prefer it from your.
You can pick, you're the board.
I'm just saying, it's. Really, if somebody go on and say they're for five minutes. And definitely, we're third, we'll ask for it, but um.
I I think we, yeah, I I think the if that's needs to make the best of that, those sentences, that's because one says the chairperson can extend it.
Okay.
Extend it.
Yep.
So I just.
Right.
Want to make it twenty minutes with the prerogative or. Chair, chair and extended, I think that's fine.
So what do you decide on?
I think we would want everybody to speak.
Yeah.
But if if we were to have somebody that we stopped, what would I?
We always listen to everybody.
That's a full sentence, it's right.
Right. I'll add that word into the one two.
Maybe forty five, so I would have wanted, you're gonna have to be in a position of cutting people off if they have.
Yeah.
Something that really wants to address us.
Right, they already have a bad timeline, so I mean, we could really just have to have more. You know, so I think that's.
I feel like I think feel that strongly about it, and you know, for being.
But then it would just require us to be like, we both took the road building segments. If you remember that, it's a twenty minute block anyway, because typically. Yeah. That's the back of the agenda, there's a specific. By law, you know, the regulations, so.
Okay.
For anything on the cloud, so. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this as amended?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Heard, two passes to approve by law nine three two four, add it in.
Beside about uh the board meeting.
We might be able to. In this.
They both were me, for listening to her, I think Kate and I found this out, the kids, and the area do not need or have a bottom side law.
But if I have something that comes up. I'll call Kate and say, you know, we could have a special one or two item meeting. That could be very, very quick on, you know, like, if there's something that happens with the building committee where we need to follow through. And you know.
It's alright.
Could we do that fully remote?
If they're not, oh, they're not, we have a forum, we've shared a forum.
Could we do it fully remote if?
Well, we, well, eh the building committee is appointed by the selectmen, they could approve the project. And we could sign that, and then the board and, you know, could confirm the decision of the building committee. I like to have motions to watch, to follow the expenditures. And and to document that the board of ed is informed about what what's happening.
It's finite, and then if there is a.
So if I have something.
Which is later in the month.
What's the, what's the project we have, the special ed office? That's it, so if the building committee gets some quotes, and we meet and they decide to approve that. I'm gonna sign a contract, because by the time the September ninth meeting. Comes, uh you know, it it might not be done depending upon the projects. Okay, so that means that. The next meeting could be September twelfth.
Agreed.
Thursday, September twelfth.
Unless there's the. Emergent August second meetings locked.
So we need a motion to cancel the August meetings.
No, 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 not a post, I'm just.
Unanimous.
Not a post.
Not a post.
Apple and peach farmer.
So. But we will look to the. Either the farther out August meeting, if need.
So other items, I think, I think we're we're pretty much set. Do we have a motion for executive session two?
Well, why don't we do it this way? We can, we can make this very short, rather than going into executive session. Uh just make a motion to uh add the superintendent's evaluation to the agenda, and Kate. Uh Kate and I have been working on the event, we give you copies and then you communicate to Val, I mean to Kate. And then uh, oh, you know, uh she would uh bring a summary in for the September meeting. Is that, is that, if, so if you make a motion to include it and I pass this out?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
It's all done.
Move the superintendent, Sabell. Into the regular agenda, you got it?
Wait, the vote of? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Opposed, unheard, motion passes.
The one you're working on, now there's no, there's no ratings on this. But I will tell you, um I I wanna give you a deadline, because I'll work with Kate. In finalizing this, so you know, if it's uh. I mean, I I don't want this to go on and on, so why don't we say. Uh a deadline of uh July thirtieth. Any comments, ratings to Kate, is that acceptable, Kate? So Kate and I will probably be talking around that time about it, but the deadline is uh. Tuesday, July thirtieth.
So without an executive session, we have a motion to.
Second.
On favor?